Of June 4th, people playing board to order at 7:05 PM. This meeting, this meeting is being recorded. I don't know if there's somebody, if we could, if everybody could please mute their microphones who's not speaking. That might help with that background noise. Okay. So if anybody is recording this meeting, please let us know. Any, anybody out there recording this other than the planning board? Okay, that's good, good to know. Looks like we have a few members of the public here with us, which is great. We'll just do a quick roll call here just because it helps. Just sort of verify he's here and even though I can see him anyway, George Tullum says. He's here even though he's muted. Jamie, Jimmy Potter here. Jim Allen.
Here.
And me, I'm Charles Roberts on here. So the first thing we want to do is we're going to go through the, the approval of the minutes from the, from the last four meetings we've had since February 11th. And why don't we start with the, the minutes from the, from the 11th? Any, this was the, it was at the John's on Community Center. This was the meeting. I think, I believe this was the, the main order of business was the, was the site plan review for the center school. And George, yes? You're muted, George.
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Sorry, Charles, which, which date was this one from?
This was, this was the, these are the minutes from the planning board meeting.
February 11th.
February, well. I'm looking at the ones from February 25th.
11th.
I didn't go far enough.
Um. See one from the 20th.
February 11th.
Can you tell me if I was there?
Well, that was the joint, yes, so this was, I'm sorry, I'm, so we, forget everything I just said, this was the one, yeah, this, this was our first public hearing. With, with the, with the CDC to review the zoning initiatives. George has, and, and present there from the planning board were myself, George, Amy McMahon, who wasn't here. And then she stepped down and actually, actually the mayor stepped in for, for the last portion of this. So, so Jamie, you and Jim weren't there and can't, can't, can't vote on this. I was, I was another person there, so I will second.
There's no quorum.
I, I don't, Eric, maybe you can clarify if I could jump in, Charles? I, I don't know that it's an absolute. That you cannot vote minutes if you weren't there. I know it's common that people abstain. I just can't vote on minutes if you weren't there.
Well, actually, now that I'm thinking about it, I think Jamie and Jim both invoked the Mullins rule. I mean, they, they, they did listen to the tapes.
I believe so, yes.
So you, so you, so Jamie, you and Jim can vote on this.
I forgot which one that was. Yes, I definitely listened and signed the Mullins document, so.
So, so you and Jim can vote on this. I have a, there's a, there's a motion on the floor initiated by George to approve these minutes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
This is Jim, I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Minutes approved. Those are, those are the two 11 minutes. The next minutes are, okay, so the, the. Trying to do this electronically, I didn't, I wasn't able to print these out. So now, now are the minutes from the March 5th meeting, which was, as I was starting to discuss, the, the meeting.
February 20th, February 20th. Yep.
This is what I get for not printing them out. I'm trying to, I'm trying to use my.
If I can offer, Charles?
Yes.
February 20th, the members present were you, me, and Jamie.
Okay, good. So we, so we have a quorum for this. So these were, these were for the, the center school site plan review.
Yep. I will move to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I, I do have a discussion. Didn't, um, I, I went back and looked at, you know, looked at the minutes. Looked at the discussion and I know that there was, that I had raised an issue about the idea of the safety between the tennis court area and the parking. And there was discussion about putting some safety ballards up there, which didn't actually, which didn't show up in the, in the conditions that I'm seeing anywhere. And.
Right.
So it, in, in the, in the discussion here.
It's actually number five, Charles. It might not be specific enough, but it says. As well as to address the parking safety concerns relative to the parking area next to the basketball court.
And then there was, okay, so then there was a semicolon and an and. Was there supposed to be something after the and, Eric?
No, that's just good grammar when you have a list.
Exactly. It's the last item, so you put an and before.
I never knew that. I've been, I've been writing, I've been, I've been writing for 55 years.
But Charles, do you want to make that any more specific in reference to the ballards?
I think, I think, I think, now that I'm seeing it here written, I think the idea was to leave it somewhat vague.
Mr. Chairman, if I could say something? The site plan approval is already done, so we can't change the condition at this point.
Right, okay, so I mean, it, it is, what, I forgot what that noises, but it's, is anybody else hearing that? It's making this.
Can you individually mute those people?
Sounds like it might have been.
I muted everybody, so unmute yourselves if you need to talk.
I'm not muted, am I? Does, I don't show up as muted.
I can hear you.
Okay. All right, great. That's much better. Thank you. So yes, if you want to, if you want to say anything, just raise your hand. And Jim, I don't know what you're gonna, what you're gonna do, just, just unmute yourself and you can talk if you have, if you want to, if you want to speak, because we can't, we can't see you here.
A question, Mr. Chairman, I just signed the protocol of this software. Are you able to unmute yourselves or since I muted everybody, can, is it only me that can unmute you now?
Let's do a test. Jamie, can you unmute yourself?
Yes, I can.
Beautiful. Okay, good, good. All right, so we, there is, we have a motion on the floor, a second to approve the minutes. We've had our discussion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Raise your hand. Jim, you can say aye.
He wasn't there.
Oh, wasn't there, okay. Thank you. Minutes approved. Okay. So the next minutes are the March 5th minutes, which was the continued public hearing. This was at the John Zahn Center. We were, I believe this was, uh. Was, this was a joint meeting with, with the, with the EDC, right, Eric? Yes.
That's correct.
And present from the planning board for this meeting were myself, Jamie, Jim, and Amy, who's not, who's not here. Did you, um, did you listen to the, the recording of this, George?
I think I did.
All right, so you can, so you, so you can, you can, you know, review and vote on these. Any, any comments on these minutes? George?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Abstentions. Jim, why, why don't you, you try, see if you take yourself off mute. If it's generally quiet, then you can just speak, because we can't see you to raise your hand. Jim, are you there?
Is he on a phone? Is he able to unmute on it if he's on a phone?
Oh, maybe not. Eric, can you unmute, can you unmute, Jim?
No idea.
Okay, okay, there you are, Jim. All right, you're there, you're unmuted, you're unmuted and we're gonna leave you that way, so, because the noise, the noise isn't emanating from your phone, so we can speak with you. So we've just, you weren't, I guess you weren't, you weren't, oh yeah, you weren't present at this meeting. Oh yeah, you were. So did you have, did you, we, there was a motion and a seconded motion to approve the minutes. Do you, are you in favor? Did you want to vote in favor or against or abstain on these minutes?
Uh, in favor.
Okay. Unanimous. Thank you. The minutes from 5th, from May 15th, so that was, I believe, yes, George?
April 29th, meeting minutes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so this was, okay, this was the first, the, the first WebEx deliberation for the zoning initiatives. Any, any comment on these from, from the board?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, um. Oh, well, my only comment was. Yeah, it was about the, the definition of family. It just says. Potter stated she supports the proposed definitions of dwelling three family and dwelling multifamily, but is concerned about eliminating or amending the definition of family. I wanted to say that I was in favor of, of amending that definition.
Okay. So you weren't questioning it, you were in favor of it?
Yeah.
George?
Can you hear me?
Yep, yep.
Thank you. Kind of a similar thing on the middle of page two. Where it says, starts off saying, stated he supports the proposed definitions of dwelling three family, dwelling multifamily, that's accurate. The second part of the sentence, but is concerned about eliminating the amending, amending or amending the definition of family, that's actually misconstruing what I said. So I would eliminate that whole phrase. So I would just say dwelling multifamily, period. Then the next sentence is accurate, saying he stated still unclear, et cetera, may conflict with state building code or other mass criminal laws. Then it'd be, I would add on to the end of that, after laws, but has noted the extent of public concern about the current definition. Should I repeat that, Eric?
Can't seem to find it.
Say again?
To it in that, in that big paragraph.
Of my, my comments on the definition of family. I was actually concerned about the definition of family. I, I wasn't sure about the technical aspects, but I was concerned about keeping it, not concerned about eliminating it. Is that, is that clear enough? I can send that to you by email if that's helpful. Can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Eric, I think you've, you've somehow lost the volume on your mic.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Same as it was.
You, you had a mute button on, so maybe, I don't know, getting the mute button just turned off, I don't. Okay.
Is that clear, clear enough, Eric?
It's clear if you could send that email to building code part.
Okay, that's clear enough, that's fine. Thanks.
I didn't have any comments. It, it looks, this looked fine to me. Let me see.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Jim, everything looks okay to you?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Abstentions. Minutes are approved. Now we'll move along to the May 15th, WebEx meeting minutes. This was the, the meeting where it was myself and George and Jim. Counselor Dolan was there. He was our, our sole public participant. And I, I went through and. We, you looked at the recommendations and I, I didn't have any, any comments on this generally. George?
Move to, move to approve.
This was the meeting that we had at 4:30 in the afternoon, right?
Right.
Yep.
Is it okay to you, Jim?
Yes, definitely.
Okay. All in, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of approving?
Aye.
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 Minutes, minutes are approved of the May 15th WebEx meeting. Okay, I believe this concludes the, the review of the minutes. And the next item on the, the agenda are, are ZBA recommendations. Yes, and, and the first, first recommendation we have is an application of Rachel Jakay. Did I pronounce your last name right, Rachel?
Jakeway.
Jakeway. Application for Rachel Jakeway for property located at 427 Davis Street, assessors map 113 lot 30, which is located in the urban residential zoning district for a special permit pursuant to sections 200-6.1C, 200-8.3. And zoning ordinance in order to allow the operation of a dog daycare center at this location. So. Did you want to, to discuss your, your project at all presented to us and let us know what you're doing and, and some of your plans?
Sure. So the plan is to offer green fields, a doggy daycare, which it has been lacking for years and is definitely something that we are behind in. It's about 20 minute drive to the local, the closest dog daycare. I, my plan at the location is basically there's a 4, 4,300 or so square feet that I could have indoor play space. There would be three play areas, a quiet room for quiet time, or if dogs need to decompress. There's a reception area, and then there's an outdoor space of about 1,000 square feet that will be fenced in for outdoor play. That's the plan. Oh, and there's no boarding, it's just daycare. It's Monday, Friday, 7 to 7. Eventually, I would like to have weekends, but it really will depend on if there's a demand for that. If not, I wouldn't do that. But I would like to, at times in the evenings, maybe have community outreach. Seminars and things that are related to dogs, like people learning about dog body language and just basically things to help people be better dog owners. And if they're just interested in that kind of stuff. And then on the weekends, possibly people can rent the space for a few hours with, we would be there supervising, but for birth, doggy birthday potties. So they can have, you know, a space to invite a few dogs to come play and have cake. It's a real thing, people do it. So, basically, I want to provide an, of, something. And I've been, in the past four years or so, I have been having dog play group. Card. My business is Happy Tales Dog Play Groups and Pet Care right now, and I pick up dogs in the middle of the day, we have a play group. And then we return them home. The dogs are matched ability and style and everything. This is basically, basically an expansion for that, because I get so many calls and requests of daycare. Extended hours in, in the day and I can't accommodate it. So it's definitely something that has been presented to me over the years many times as something I need. I want to be able to provide that.
Okay. Thank you.
If I didn't answer any questions at my, for you, I want to, so please let me know.
Thanks. Did anybody from the board have any, any specific comments about this? Yes, George?
Thanks, Charles. Hi, um, I was, hey, Rachel, I was wondering about, and sorry if I didn't spot it on your application. The numbers or limits of numbers you were planning for?
So. What you want is 100 square feet per dog. So ultimately, there would probably be enough square feet for 40 to 50 dogs. The, obviously, that would be the goal, and it wouldn't be all at once generally, because we have morning, afternoon, and all daycare, so sometimes there'll be mornings. And then afternoons, but that would be the max capacity for what I think is appropriate with the standard, pretty much, but what's appropriate for the amount of dogs that could be safely there and playing.
At one time, 40 to 50?
Yeah. My goal is to have that many in a whole day, which could be half day, full day, which means they're not always all there at the same time.
And if I could follow up, you were talking about some in your application, some evening and some weekend, but you weren't talking about the same.
I missed the last part, but no, that, this is.
I muted, sorry. You were, you weren't talking about the same range of activities. You weren't talking about the outdoor space, evenings and weekends, is that accurate?
In the evenings, no, it would be indoor. Any kind of extra activities we have will be indoors. On the weekends, if I were able to offer weekend daycare, it would probably be limited hours, so it would be like, maybe like nine to three or eight to four, or something like that. Where there could be outdoor play. And mind you, when there is outside play, it's not consistent all day. You kind of rotate the group, so sometimes there wouldn't be any dogs outside. I did have a couple of, I sent letters out to all of the butters explaining exactly what I wanted to do in detail. And I'm, I asked them to give me a call if they had questions, and I did have a few people call me, and people's biggest concern was, is there going to be barking or noise? And when I explained to them.
Right.
How, you know, there, there's always dogs supervised, there's not excessive, just a dog out there bark, bark, barking. Everyone that called me that was concerned said they understood that, yeah, when dogs play, they may get loud, they may bark a little, but their, their biggest concern was unsupervised dogs just being left outside to bark. And I assured everyone that that would never happen. We will fully have, everything will be supervised at all times. Dogs will not be left alone. So, there's that.
Thank you.
Thanks, George. So I'm, I'm just trying to sort of relate your, your plan, Rachel, to, to the street and the entry and, and everything, and just want to make sure that, that I'm, that I'm understanding. So where, where, where you have Kearney's Auto Repair, is that, is that, is that the portion of the building facing the street?
So, they're. Kenny's. She's, the person who leases, is leasing me the building, Joyce Kenny, Joyce, it's on the phone here too, so she can answer questions as well.
Hi, Joyce.
Hello.
It's Kenny's Auto, Auto Repair. I believe they do like exotic cars. So the actual garage part that you see is their business, the owner's, the whole building's business. And then there's, there's a loading dock, and then there's a separate whole other side. That would be where the daycare would be.
So the little, the, the, the gable shaped building with the little shed, with the shed roofs coming off of each side and the, the larger picture windows with the door in the middle?
Yep.
Correct.
Okay, so what, so where it says, so is, again, is the, so is the Kenny's Auto Repair, what's, what's facing the street? It's just hard to relate the plan to kind of what, what I'm, what I'm seeing here.
So they, all the entrances face the street. There's three doors where the, the actual daycare would be. One of the doors all the way to the far right would be the reception entrance. There's an actual office area there. And the middle door would be closed and locked and wouldn't be used. And then the left door would be for, so I, I also would offer, one of the benefits, offer some pick up and drop off for dogs. So that would also reduce the amount of people coming down the street, because I would be picking some dogs up every day and dropping them off. So that other entrance would be where I would actually like put dogs into the building on my own with, if their people weren't there.
Okay, and so, and so the play area on your drawing is the area north of the garage? I'm just trying to see.
I don't know direction very well.
No, say, away from town.
Right, so. Towards.
The play. The play area outside would be directly behind the garage. I think that's what you're asking?
Yeah, okay.
So it would be directly behind the garage, and there'd be access through the back of the right-hand side of the building. There's a pathway and the play area would be directly behind the garage.
Okay. Okay. So that, I'm just, I'm looking on Google Earth and trying to get a sense of, of like, of like, you know, the neighbors, so all, everybody's, everybody's kind of backyards are, are kind of sort of revolving around and, and adjacent to this, this, this general area.
Yeah.
Correct.
One of the people that actually contacted me lives right behind there, and I was, with, after talking with him, we've established that he was directly behind where the play area would be. He was, at the end of our phone call, said that he supported the idea. He, his only concern was dogs just being left outside, which I assured him would not happen.
And this is all new, new fencing you're proposing, the six foot and five foot fences?
So the fences would be movable fences. They are chain link, you know, the, like, if you go to a construction site, they have those movable chain link fences.
Yeah.
So it would be that.
Okay.
So they wouldn't be, I wouldn't be digging into the ground to install them, and I would prefer to be able to move them.
Okay.
And Rachel, Rachel, do you put covering on the fences? Do you put the strips through so that, yeah?
So they'll be, I have, you know, all in the budget and in the plan to have privacy. They come, they can order privacy shields, so everything would be.
Um, what about, what about on the exterior of the building in terms, so you, you have your parking area right off Davis Street, which is great to have all that parking. And then are you, are you, are you, are you doing any, proposing any kind of like signage or new lighting or, or anything for your, for your business?
I would definitely want a sign put out there, and I believe there has been signs there in the past, so there is setup for that.
Yeah, there's signs there now, I could see.
Yeah.
Currently, correct.
Yeah.
And as far as other things, we haven't, we actually spoke with Mark Snow, and we have architects who come walk through on Friday to let us know what other changes we would have to make.
Yep. So you're not gonna be doing any, any, are you gonna be doing any striping on the parking area, or you're just gonna pretty much kind of, you know, sort of spruce it up and, and leave, leave the site generally as it is?
Yeah, I definitely, I personally, we haven't talked about this with Lisa, live with Joyce or her husband Jerry, but, you know, freshening up the paint on the outside is something we want to do, and I would love to put flowers out there, who knows if that will happen. But basically, it wouldn't change a whole lot, other than just sprucing up and cleaning up. We, we're gonna do a whole inside cleanup and paint and everything inside, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So no real site work in terms of delineating parking spaces or creating a handicap parking space or, or anything like that?
Uh, no. I could put a handicap sign if that was required. Absolutely. I wouldn't have a problem with that.
It might, it might not be a bad idea just to delineate some, a dedicated parking space area, whether you do that with a, with signage. You know, usually it's an X, usually it's a little wider parking space than, not usually, it is a wider parking space. And, uh, um, I think they're usually 15 feet wide and they have that, you know, that little sort of circulation zone, um, painted on them. Might be something to think about.
Yeah. Um, the other thing also is that basically because of what is happening right now, uh, with COVID and everything, we will have procedures and protocols, especially in place for when people drop dogs off. So often people won't be actually parking. They'll be pulling in, I'll be meeting them or one of my employees will be meeting to transfer the dog over at a distance. We have a whole way I do it now in a safe way. Um, so there wouldn't actually be, I don't think there'll be a time where the, all the parking spaces are even, even after. Move on hopefully eventually, if life gets back to, you know, less distancing and stuff. I don't think there'll ever be a time where it's completely, the parking lot's completely full during the day, maybe during pickups and drop offs. Maybe if we have a, like a seminar or something, but really I don't expect to.
Okay. Jamie, do you have any thoughts you'd like to share?
I was just wondering if there, what were the, what the parking requirements were for this kind of business, Charles or Eric, George, if you guys remember that.
I can look it up.
I don't recall offhand.
From what I've been told from Joyce, there will be, I think it's six to eight parking spots available to me.
And that's correct. And also if there was something on weekends or after hours, um, we aren't there at that time. So there'd be additional parking on, on our side of the building also.
And Rachel, how many employees at one time?
Um, well, to start, I am hiring one person and then as we reach the goals, um, I'm hoping to have four or five employees total, maybe six.
Thanks.
Those employees could park to the left of the building also. Those wouldn't be in front of the building. The employee parking would be, um, off to the other side.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can't, I have to sort of go through the whole parking section of the ordinance to. Intuitively, it, it just feels like there's enough parking there right now, especially if you, if you're doing, if, you know, when things calm down. There's, you know, if you're doing sort of like dog, doggy parties and things like that, you'd be able to coordinate the scheduling of those, uh, you know, with the owners so that you possibly take advantage of that. There's also parking on the street available, I assume, so. Um, Jim, did you have anything you'd like to, uh, add or ask?
I know my, my only real question is, um, has to do with handicapped, uh, people with their particular dog or, dog needs. Um, if, if they're going to have handicap parking available for, um, you know, dogs that are service dogs, that's basically the word I want.
Well, we had a discussion about, about potentially, um, having a, a, an accessible parking space there. And that might be a recommendation that we forward along to the ZBA.
Okay. Well, that would be my only concern because I, you know, it would be a, a, a shame to have everything perfect and then, you know, not have a, uh, 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 basically a, a parking space for somebody who absolutely requires a service dog.
Right.
Absolutely. I agree with that. Um, if, if it was a client who was just, that had, you know, was handicapped and that was dropping their dog off for a play group. I would, we would as a business not, you know, it's like hard for them to get in and out of their car. They wouldn't ever have to do that. We would meet them out there and, and get the, the dog for them. But as far as, um, seminars or things like that, yes, I think that, I, I think it's requirement anyways to have them be kept. So.
George?
Yeah, that's an interesting, um, point, Jim. Um, obviously if someone has a service dog, they usually want to have it with them at all times. But I wondered, Rachel, have you had any experience at your current location with people bringing service dogs for socialization or something like that?
Actually, generally when dogs are, I actually worked with a gentleman, um, for many years. I was a nursing assistant and I worked with a man in a wheelchair who had a service dog. Um, and they don't generally go to play groups or have that. They play with their, the person they, you know, are helping, um, and they just are kind of their partner. I did, however, that same gentleman, when that dog retired, did send him to my play group. So once he was retired, he was able to come and play. Um, but that was not something that was, you do when you're actually have your dog working. You, you're the only one that interacts and plays with them. So.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we, do you, do we have enough information here to articulate a, a motion? Anybody?
Um, last question, Eric, I, I know we've had other, um, um, I'm, I'm just trying to remember. We've had other, um, issues come up about numbers of, um, dogs people can have on their property. There, there's no ordinances relevant to this when it's a, just a daycare kind of arrangement as far as numbers of dogs.
Yeah. In Greenfield for numbers of dogs, if you have four or more dogs, you're actually required to get a animal kennel license through the ZBA.
But that's just if you have the dogs living with you.
Uh, that's just for any dogs and dogs period, whether they're being kennelled or aborted or just owned. If it's four or more, you have to go through the same process.
Is that true?
But that's not for dogs, just, sorry.
No, go ahead, George. I'm sorry.
That's just that they're living with you if you own them, not if you're, or, you know, not if you're having them there for part of the day in this kind of arrangement.
Uh, you do, you do need a kennel license, um, for four or more dogs total, whether or not they live with you every day or you have a place where you have dogs. When I started my dog play groups and had to go before the zoning board and get a special permit, um, kennel license basically for having the dogs in my, at my home every day.
Well said.
So is licensing a part of this, of this process then?
No, this process is, if you look at the notice, the section of the zoning ordinance that's quoted is the animal kennel license. And that's what she's going for, but it's a dog daycare center.
Okay.
Uh, uh, one question, um, are, are we going to be, uh, like there's a, um, pet cleaning, uh, service on Federal Street as well as one, uh, up near Stop and Shop on, on, uh, Toure, uh, it would be something like that too, or?
No, I don't, I don't have a grooming license. Um, some dog daycares do offer grooming if they can get a, an actual, um, groomer to come in like work with them. I have a good relationship with one of the groomers in town, Mighty Clean, and we have, we share a lot of, um, a lot of the same clients. So we do think to have a service where I can bring the dogs to her or pick them up from her if they're being groomed during the day. Um, but it wouldn't be separate, the whole totally separate business.
Well. Okay. And does anybody have any further, uh, questions for Rachel at this point? Um, does anybody feel like developing a motion?
I'll move that we approve the application.
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay. A, any further discussion? George?
I, I think Jamie means, uh, forward a positive recommendation to the ZBA.
Right.
That's what I meant. You got me, George.
I, I knew, I knew that's what she meant. I, I just, yeah. So thanks for making it official, George. We all.
Never miss a beat, my friend.
No, this is, keeps us honest, keeps, keeps me honest.
Positive recommendation to the ZBA.
Excellent. And, and Jim seconded that. Uh, any further discussion?
Well, I, I, I don't know that we need to, um, uh, mention anything about, um, the handicap parking spot because I think that just is, um, an automatic, um, uh, legal requirement, um, for a parking space. Any parking space of any, a parking area of any size requires one handicap parking space.
That's right, George, but it's, that's right. But there's no delineation of any parking spaces on this lot at all. There's no striping and there's no designated area. So I guess the question is, would we want to, would you want to, uh, include a recommendation that just calls for the creation of, of a dedicated space? For handicap parking?
It couldn't hurt, I guess.
You know, even, even if, even if it's just a handicap parking sign attached to the side of the building. You know, or the front of the building, sort of designating it.
Sure. Couldn't hurt.
Yep. I like that as a family amendment.
Yeah. I don't, other than that, um, I don't think I have any, any other, any others sort of additional recommendations I would make. So any further discussion? In favor of a forwarding back positive recommendation?
Aye.
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 Aye, Jim. All right.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.
You're welcome, Rachel.
Have a good rest tonight.
Yeah, you too.
As well. Thanks for being with us.
Good luck.
Okay. Next up. Well. Next up is, is, uh, is William Jones for property on Minor Street, but I see that we have Mr. Wheeler here sitting in, um, on, on the meeting patiently. Does anybody have an objection if we skip over B and go to C and come back to, come back to B? No. Everybody's okay with that? Okay, great. Um, so moving on to C, application, Fred Wheeler, the property located at 24 Place Merritt, Place Terrace Assessor's Map 101, 20B, which is located in the urban residential zoning district. Or special permit pursuant to sections 206.3, 208.3 zoning ordinance in order to allow the conversion of a sign business to a home occupation with a single family home at this location. So, uh, Mr. Wheeler, would you like to tell us, uh, a little bit about what you want to do?
Sure. Um, well, maybe I give you a little background about my, my business here. I've been in business for 41 years. And, uh, 40 years right here on Place Terrace. I've lived here actually this month would be 40 years. And, uh, so we built the, uh, this building that I'm working out of back in 2003. And so it's been almost 17 years that I've been working here. And, uh, basically it's a pretty quiet business. Uh, people come in and discuss what they need. Uh, it could be a vehicle lettered. Uh, we do the Greenfield police cruisers, for example. We letter all those. We do Greenfield fire trucks. And so, you know, those are the type of things we've done. And, uh, when I built the building though, I made enough room upstairs that hopefully someday we could move over here and move into the building and have an in-home business that, uh, we've always wanted to do. So, um, so that's why I'm asking now. I'd like to be able to convert the upstairs into our home or the whole building into our home and then have the business as part of that. I'm 62. I'm kind of slowing down. I'm kind of wanting to, uh, downsize my business. And, uh, I've had the employees in the past and all that. I've, I've been there. So now it's just myself and my wife working with me. And, uh, we still do a lot of the local stuff and, um, so that's what I was hoping to do. Hoping that we could just, uh, finish off the, the upstairs and have the building for our place of residence as I retire.
Okay. Thank you. Sounds like a nice plan. Um, so right now, the, uh, so is the, is the upper, is the upper level now finished as a living space or, so you're going to convert that?
Yes. It's just been bare. It's been just, uh, all unfinished. Uh, this, the ceiling to the first floor is all insulated. So, and, uh, so we've just had that part of it. So the upstairs has basically been storage.
Are you going to keep that? So the plans for the first floor, I think there's a three bay garage there. Is that right?
It's actually two bay garage. Office. Yeah.
Okay. And you're, are you going to keep that as it is? Are you going to convert the entire sort of first floor ultimately into living, do you think, or?
Um, my plan would be probably most of the living area would be on the second floor. And plus there is a basement under the office area, which would probably be more residential for our home as well for storage and things.
Yeah. And then there's a, you're going to, uh, so just maintain that, that large parking, you, you have a nice generous parking area because you have a business there, obviously. And if you're doing car stenciling, then cars are having to sort of park out there and queue up and you could just go basically leave that as is?
Yeah. Yeah. I thought I have four parking spaces, um, with just the two of us. It would only be a one bedroom house. That's all that I'm planning on putting upstairs. So.
Okay. Jamie, do you have any? Any questions to add?
I'm taking it in, looking at survey here. Looks like it meets all the, the setbacks. Um, yeah, I don't, I don't think I have any, any questions. Looks like there's a paved, paved driveway there.
So, so it exists on, it exists on sort of a double lot, right? Is that what I was saying?
Yeah, it's lot three and four there on.
I mean.
Merit survey.
I mean, at some point you could obviously develop lot three, which would, and then that's later on down the road. And you'd have to, you know, how, however that would work with driveways and everything, but just an option.
Yeah, that would have to be a shared drive of some sort.
But it looks like you got your setbacks there, so.
Yeah, I don't think I have any other questions. George?
Thanks, Tim. Um, I have a, uh, question more for Eric. Um, I'm curious. Since this is being converted, um, to a residential use in a residential district. I, I'm, um, I was trying to look through the zoning ordinance to understand why this would need a special permit. Couldn't find it. I thought I'd cheat and wait for the meeting and ask you.
Very good question, and it all has to do with the home occupation section of the zoning ordinance. There's certain home occupations allowed by right and certain ones that require a special permit from the ZBA. Any type of auto business, uh, lettering or repair would definitely is a special permit from the ZBA for the home occupation.
Okay. And so because the business is going to still be functioning at some level in some capacity while they're living there, you need.
If he was to use that building as a single family home completely with no business there, he could do that without going before the ZBA. If he was to use that building as a single-family home completely with no business there, he could do that without going before the ZBA. Because it's now mixing in a special permit level occupation, that's why.
Okay.
Got it. Thank you.
Jim, do you have any, any questions for Mr. Wheeler here?
No, it basically, I went by it today. It looks fine. Looks, nice neighborhood. And I'm looking forward to the day when this school in the area there can be reopened. It's a nice neighborhood, a nice quiet neighborhood, and I don't see it really affecting the neighborhood at all, school. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Should we make a motion?
I would move to approve, I mean, I would move to forward a positive recommendation.
Gotcha.
We caught you, George. I will second that.
Further discussion? Okay, all in favor forwarding a positive recommendation?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All abstentions?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good. Your ayes and yes.
Aye for everybody.
And I forgot. Okay, good. All right, well, recommendation passes. Good luck with the ZBA, Fred. And enjoy, enjoy executing your plans.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck with that.
Bye-bye.
Good night.
Right. Okay, now we're going to back up to the Minor Street project. And that applicant is not here. But this is for the application of William Jones for property located at 14 Minor Street, Assessor's Map 46 Lot 11, which is located in the general commercial zoning district for a special permit pursuant to sections 200-4.9C6 and 200-8.3 zoning ordinance to allow the conversion of the building from office space to single-family dwelling at this location. And so I'm assuming, Eric, that this requires a special permit because it's in the general commercial zoning district?
That is correct.
So I drove by the site. It's, you know, it's, it's, it's totally, it's very residential neighborhood. You wouldn't necessarily even know there's a business here. That, those are my thoughts. Anybody else? George, have any?
Yeah, the same, same reaction. It's, zoning is fascinating.
Jamie?
Ditto. It seems pretty straightforward. Nothing will be impacted. Seems like a no-brainer recommendation.
Jim, any thoughts?
I went by it twice before I realized I was looking at a house rather than a business.
Yeah.
So it, it, it's well-hidden.
Motion to make a positive recommendation?
So moved.
Second, anyone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And no, no more discussion? No more discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Positive recommendation passes. Thank you.
It's an easy one for a change.
I know, right?
Always feel so good.
It does. Okay, we have a, we have an A and R for 60 James Street. I didn't get to, I didn't get to drive by this. Yes, Eric?
Jennifer Bach is on the, is on, joined our meeting, and she was going to be the fourth ZBA special permit recommendation. She might not have understood that we're going to continue this to another meeting, but if you would like to hear her, I have no issues with that.
Um, yes, yes, Jennifer, by all means. I think Eric probably has to unmute you and then you can talk about your.
Hello. I wasn't ready to be tonight, but if you want to listen, then I'll go ahead. So I am the owner of 316 Silver Street, and I've owned the house for just about 10 years now. And I love my house and I have just over 1.7 acres of land. My parents are getting to the age where they're looking to retire and I want to be able to care for them as they get older. So I want to add on an accessory dwelling for them to have a two-car garage in the basement and a one-bedroom apartment up above that is linked to my house for easy access. So as they age, I am able to access them easily and care for them in their own home. I did talk to Eric today and there was a couple of things that he needed, which we'll be getting to him ASAP. And.
Okay. Yeah, was, was one of them the size of the addition, the size of the ADU?
He was looking, he had mentioned dimensions of the rooms. We had the dimension of the exterior, but he was looking for the dimensions of the rooms, which I guess we did not put in there somehow.
Well, I think what we're, what, what we, what we're, one thing we're also concerned with is the overall square footage of the, of the ADU. I think, I think the cap's 900 square feet. So we said, we just, and I, I was looking at your submittal package and I, I'm really sorry if I missed it, but I didn't see the, the square footage of the unit on the drawings.
There is a clause that if your footage, you can increase your footage up to a third of the square footage of your home. And my square footage would create a much bigger accessory dwelling if I wanted, but we are just going to do the 960 that we have asked for.
Okay, um, I guess, I guess we would need to see that calculation. We would need to see the area of the existing house and the area of the, of the ADU. And, 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 and so under current, but because, because you applied for this under the, under the zoning before the change was made, you're, that's why that's, that's still allowed, Eric, even though the zoning has changed to, to cap it at 900 square feet at this point?
The zoning for that district is still as it is. The new, new amendments do apply. It's just in the GI zone, a special permit's required for ADUs. The maximum square footage is still 900 square feet or one-third of the largest unit. So if someone has 9,000 square feet, they could do a 3,000 square foot ADU.
Oh, I thought, I thought the zoning changed it, changed that one-third allowance to just cap it at 900 square feet. They didn't do that?
To us. They didn't listen to us.
All right, well, that, that's, that's a win for you, Jennifer. But we'll, we'll just, but we, but it would be nice if we could see the math.
Will do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we'll look, we'll look forward to seeing you, I guess, in a couple of weeks.
Yes, awesome. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, Jennifer.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, the James Street A and R, 60 James Street. Do you want to give us a little narrative on this, Eric?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. You see 60 James Street, there's a line that's, there's a new line being proposed. It's pretty much cutting the lot in half. So that's all it is. There's, there's a new, one new line going across that property, creating two lots out of the existing one lot, and they meet the frontage requirement.
So what's, so parcel A is not a building lot? It has no frontage?
Correct. Parcel A is going to the neighboring property and then the one on the street is the one that meets the frontage requirement.
Eric, which, which property is parcel A going to? Usually it says.
Say on the plan. I don't have a copy of the plan in front of me, unfortunately.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to do something really cool here.
You're going to like open up our town GIS.
No, I can't, I can't, no, I'm going to, I'm going to.
Screen sharing. We did it.
Yeah, I.
Screen share.
I should be able to. Screen share.
With a little arrow. It's the third.
So, but I have lots of, I have lots of things I could be sharing. This one?
There it is.
You did it.
Right. So, this is parcel A and this is lot one. So I can't be, just wondering like where where parcel A is going to.
Right. Usually it says like to be combined with land of so-and-so, but.
Scroll down a little bit, Charles. What's that note at the bottom say? It doesn't say.
It doesn't specify what we're asking. I mean, I guess it doesn't really matter, but usually.
It doesn't, yeah, it's irrelevant, actually. If the line is drawing in half and this lot one meets the requirements, then it has to be endorsed.
Well, I mean, it may not be, I guess you wouldn't necessarily have to convey it to anybody. You could just be, you could just be dividing the lot.
Correct.
Well, but it has to have, has to have legitimate access. That's just why we would want to know that it wasn't a floater.
Parcel A doesn't necess, doesn't need legitimate access, only lot one.
It says, yeah, because it says it's not a buildable lot.
Correct.
Because it says it's not a buildable lot, you don't care if it has.
Right. So later on down the road, if, 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 if lot one sells parcel A to a neighbor, that'll come before us and they want to, and they want to incorporate it into their property, it'll become another A and R. So right now, it's just kind of.
So it's possible, it's possible it's being divided off from lot one and not being sold?
Correct. That's a possibility.
Interesting.
I imagine that, yeah. I imagine it's being sold. People generally don't do A and Rs unless they're selling the lot.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a kind of wet area there. You know, maybe, who knows what they're, I'm going to look it up here on Google Earth. People see this?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, I got to be careful what I do here.
Yeah, careful what you're sharing. I, I was on a Zoom call earlier where one of the people I was talking to, their cats came into the room and had a cat fight. So we had to go and break that up.
That's funny.
Yeah.
I locked my cat in my basement so it wouldn't jump up here and mess up my meeting.
So that's interesting. So here's, here's that groovy new little, that groovy new little house, energy-efficient house that, that woman built, which I really like. I guess it's not giving me the three, I guess we don't have 3D street view here.
It's cool though, yeah.
And so, so this is, so there's no building here now or anything, and this is all kind of like a gully, like a wetland gully. This, this, this land down here could never be, could never be developed. And so my guess is, is that they're either, you know, going to donate it to somebody, to some kind of land conservancy, or you'd probably know about that, Jamie, if that was true.
No one wants a piece with no access on James Street.
Well, it's weird.
What's happening?
Where it is, though, and there's, there's no access and it's not buildable, from what I can tell. So, I don't know.
It's just kind of funny. So I'm, I'm assuming they're going to give it or, or sell it to a neighbor. It's just odd that that wouldn't be stated. I guess it doesn't have to be on the plan, but.
It doesn't have to be, no?
Seen it on.
To be on the plan.
Okay. Well, this was just curiosity, but this, so this meets the, the A and R requirements?
Again, just to, yeah, there's two requirements that have to be met. It has to meet the frontage requirement of the district in which it's located, which it does. And it has practical access, so you can actually drive through the frontage and get to the lot. So it meets those.
It doesn't have to satisfy our curiosity?
It can do that, too.
Well, it's in my neighborhood, so I was curious.
Yeah, you can, yeah, you can sort of get a sense of the topo here. It just all just kind of.
That's a cool, cool perspective there, Charles. All right. Well, I move that we approve it.
Do I have a, is there a second? Okay, any further discussion?
Nope.
Done. All in favor of approving this not, approval not required?
Yep.
Aye.
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 I move to have the chair sign on behalf of the board.
There's my Sharpie. Just right on my computer screen, Eric.
So I, I seconded that.
Okay.
Do you want to know who's in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. No, no. Okay.
No no's.
All right, we're getting, we're getting loose here.
A little lumpy.
You know why? Because it's too late. We should change the meeting time.
Can we discuss that? Is that an item on the agenda that we can codify, please?
So, discussion and vote on changing the planning board's meeting time from seven to six. Do I have a motion on that?
So very moved to do that change.
I'll second.
I'll second it.
I need you, Jim.
I can't think that there's a, I can't think that there's a, I've tried to think whether there's a downside to this. I'm, just from the point of view of people coming to the meeting or stuff like this, but I, I think it's overall a positive. Especially if we run late, I think our effectiveness decreases and with fatigue and so, I think it's overall a positive.
And I have these library meetings every, every Thursday, right before the planning board meetings, and there's this chunk of time, it's about an hour and a half between the library and this meeting, where I don't really have much to do. So this is going to kind of just make my time more efficient. So I like it.
Good. Yeah, me, me too, particularly now that I'm, I'm working from home for the foreseeable future. It's kind of nice to wrap up the day a little bit earlier. So I appreciate your flexibility on that.
All right, so do we have, so we've had our motions, we've had our discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? No. Abstentions? No. Okay, great, thank you.
Guys, I appreciate that.
Can I ask, ask something?
Sure.
For some reason, I, I, when I went out today, or yesterday, rather, looking for all these properties throughout the town, it's, if you're driving along at 20, 25 miles an hour and a lot of houses don't have street numbers on them, it's kind of tough to determine which, which house it is you're looking at, whether you're looking at the right house or the wrong house. Is, is there possible that we could get a, a, a print on, 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 on a computer screen or on the back of a paper or something so that, you know, the, the, the place at 427, where the Davis Street, there was two businesses, one opposite facing the other. And I had to really look over to determine which one was which. And, and then I was down looking at Minor Street. And I, I had a hell of a time finding Minor Street, which, which house property it was. And, and the one on, on, just gave up on.
Jim, do you have?
Is there any way that we could get a, a print of these so that, or, or a computer printout or something so that I can see what I'm looking for when, before I get there?
Jim, do you have access, do you, are you at all familiar with Google Earth?
I have no idea.
This, this wonderful app here where you just, you type in the address and it brings you right to it and you can see it. I mean, I, I mean, I, I use this sometimes for sites. If I can get enough, lots of times you can get enough information off Google Earth for a site. If it's not, if it's not a complicated project, you know, you can.
I'll, I'll see. There was a couple of family members that know, have a lot more about this than I do, so I'll ask members. there was a couple of family members that know, have a lot more about this than I do, so, I'll ask members, a couple of them, maybe they can figure it out.
I got a question, Jim.
Okay.
Picture, would a picture of the property on the property card be enough for you?
Yeah, all, all I really want to do is, is I want to make sure that I'm looking at the, the right house, you know?
I think the property card will, the property card shows it. Okay.
Great idea.
Yeah, I think that would work.
That's what I'll do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Nice.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
Chairman, uh, what about the next meeting discussion?
Yeah, so, on July second, we have a, a special permit for a shared driveway, which I think falls under our jurisdictions, not a recommendation. And then we also are gonna have Jennifer coming back with her ADU, for, uh, and this, this is, this is for, uh, rec, this is for a special permit recommendation to the planning board, I mean, to the ZBA, so, we could, we could, I, I'm thinking, I, I just wanted to sort of gauge people's thoughts and reactions about meeting on the second, which I believe is the Thursday before a long weekend, and if, um, people were gonna be away or available for that.
Charles, if I could, you just.
Eric's not gonna be here, yes, George?
You just told her we'd see her in a couple of weeks, just let, point that out. For what that's worth.
Couple of weeks, it could be, you know, I guess a couple of weeks.
Oh, well.
I don't know what that means, I mean, obviously it's keyed around, you know, the decision is at a ZBA meeting, so, I don't know exactly when those are happening, so if it, um, if, you know, waiting to the July meeting wouldn't change, make a difference as far as which ZBA meeting she's coming before, that's no difference for her. I just wanted to mention that, because I, I was assuming that meant, you know, literally two weeks from tonight, so.
Two weeks from tonight, no, I think, so Eric, why, so what, why, why was the, uh, the ADU hearing pushed off to July second?
Notice requirements, it was impossible to meet them without, the earliest meeting is July second.
Oh, okay.
Well, so.
So I think we don't have a meeting on the eighteenth.
That's what I was assuming, no meeting on the eighteenth.
There's nothing on the agenda.
Yay, I mean, well.
Again, I was just going by what you said to her, taking it literally.
Yeah, no, I was actually, yeah, I, I think I misspoke. Hopefully she'll be okay, I'm sure she knows when she's coming back.
Yes, I told her July second, I told her July second anyways, today, earlier.
So a couple of weeks, you know, it's next month.
I'll mute myself.
So we'll, so we'll meet on the second.
Thanksgiving week, we can always do it.
Yeah, um, we'll meet on the second, uh, Eric, are you, are you, you were going to, maybe we don't have to do it tonight, but at some point, I just, Eric was just gonna give a, a brief narrative summary of, uh, of, of the ADU bylaw as it stands now, under the, under the new zoning. Maybe you know it.
Be happy to do that now, if you want, unless you guys have had enough for tonight.
Um, well, I mean, Jay, do you, do you, do you three feel confident that you, you fully understand the ADU bylaw as it's, as it's now indoctrinated into town zoning?
I was not at that meeting, and I have not figured out what actually got passed, so that would probably be helpful. Pressure.
So.
I don't know what happened.
Here's a quick summary of what happened, so you'll know, so, the parking is quite easy, they listened to your recommendation and did the two changes, which is a positive thing. Definitions, they eliminated the definition of family and changed the definition of multifamily from three to four or more. They changed the ADU ordinance by adding two-family, getting rid of the requirement of restriction to two bedrooms and no more than three people. That was eliminated. That's it for that change for the ADU. The only, and in terms of the other zoning changes, they allowed single-family, two-family, and three-family by right in all districts that currently allow them, and even those that don't allow to include the limited commercial, general commercial, and central commercial, so all those, they did adopt. So they pretty much listened to everything you said and what I recommended, except for that one thing you said earlier, Charles, which is now slipping in my mind.
Well, they did say that the ADU is gonna, was now.
ADU, yes.
The, the ADU is, yeah, so the ADU, e, e, even if it's, even if it's a two-family, this is, this is where I get confused about it, so, you have, you have, you have a two-family house, and you want to add on a third unit, and you can add, and, and so there's no point in making that, if it's an internal, even an addition, there's no point in making it an ADU, is there? I mean, what's that, I guess that whole sort of.
It's not an ADU, you know, that's why, if you have a one-family, you want to make a two-family, it's not an ADU, it's two-family, if you have a two-family, you want to add a unit, you're now making a three-family, which is all allowed by right.
So why, so, so why does Jennifer have to come to us as an ADU?
Because the only district that didn't get changed, because the adoption happened on June fifteenth of this year, the youth group member, they met many months, they recommended some things, including Jenny, they recommended ADUs be allowed by special permit in the GI zone, and that stayed the same.
So the, so the only ADU that's gonna come before us, the site, for site plan review is for detached.
Correct.
Yes. There is, there's no more such, there's no, there's no longer any such thing as an internal ADU, or, or, or a two, or even a, or, or an attached ADU.
Only within the GI district.
Only in the GI district, so does that, does that make sense to folks?
So, so detached, uh, ADUs are allowed by right?
Yes, and that's the other zoning change, thank you, George, uh, they made ADUs of all types by right in all districts, except the GI, we kept the same, which I just stated. So, they're all allowed by right, unless it's non-conforming, then it goes before the ZBA.
So, and so that still gets back to my question, why, why does, why does Jennifer have to come to us for an ADU? Why isn't she coming to us for a two-family?
Because two-family is not allowed in the GI zone, we never changed that.
Okay.
And, so the, a detached ADU is required to have a, um, site plan review?
Right.
Correct. That's another amendment they did, they changed the, they added one more criteria under site plan review for what requires site plan review, and it was accessory dwelling units.
Okay, so they require site plan review, but not special permit, except in the GI district.
Correct.
Okay. Got it.
Okay, thanks, thank you, Eric.
That's helpful, thanks for that update, because, yeah, sorry, well, and you guys recommended things differently, and then the town council just went with what they wanted.
The only one they really, they really sort of didn't follow recommendations on were the AD, was the ADU, where, where we, we were actually recommending that leave it as a special permit, and, and then add it to this, to just the discussion that it's gonna be ensuing with the dimensional density requirements.
Right.
And they, they decided not to do that.
I, I would have concurred with that same recommendation that you guys made.
Yeah, I feel, I feel like we made, that we made a great recommendation on that one.
And what did they say about the dimensional issue?
They're gonna, they're going to, they tabled that, or they withdrew it, and they're going to, um, uh, form a focus group. Eric, when, when are we gonna know about, about, you know, who's, who's gonna, who's gonna be on that, and how that group's gonna be comprised, how it's gonna be developed?
When I met with the mayor today, she mentioned that and said she wants to get on that real quick, so we'll be hearing fairly quickly from the mayor on that, but no.
There'll be one person, there'll be somebody from the planning board, somebody from the ZBA, um, somebody from the mayor's office, someone from the city council, and then a couple, then some citizen advocates. So, you could think, people could think about whether or not that's something they feel like volunteering for.
Is that, you might have just said this, sorry, is that the same thing that we talked about in terms of redistricting the whole town?
Yeah, that, that'll be all part of the conversation.
Yes.
Okay, because, yeah, Eric, you had a lot of faith that that could happen internally in the town, and not necessarily need to be shopped out for a lot of money to company.
Yeah, I think we know.
I'm assuming you'll be on that task force, then?
I'm hoping to be.
All right, if you're on it, I feel better, I, I just feel like that's a, it's such a big, I think it's one thing, it's a big deal, but redistricting the whole town is just, for a lot of reasons, I think it's a very good move, but, um, and I unfortunately don't have time to be on it, but, um.
It's a politically, it's a politically loaded move.
It's very, it's because it affects literally every person's property value, it, it just impacts every possible thing, um, which is, which is why it's tricky, but if you do it all at once, it's kind of an opportunity to get stuff in there that maybe would be harder to do on a one-off basis, so.
And by, and by, yeah.
Yeah, so just to put my plug in there, you know, we've spent a lot of time and energy focusing on affordable housing and, and downtown and infill, and I, I pointed out a couple of times to Otis and, and Tim, when they came to talk to us, that we really need to have comparable, the same intention and energy that we're putting into affordable housing, we really need to be thinking about how to protect the remaining, um, farmland in greenfield. And I think the affordable housing is part of that, because we're consolidating housing, and we are doing more infill, but particularly as we think about redistricting, that's just always my main concern, and I've, I've long wanted some kind of ag overlay district, Eric, I think we've, we've talked about this, but that, that might be an opportunity to, to get something like that in there, when everything is getting shook up, to, to, you know, and, and I don't know what's gonna happen, but, you know, the, the, the Community Preservation Act conversation, I believe that the town council did approve to get it on the ballot for November, um, and so I think it's an interesting timing with both this redistricting conversation and, uh, the town considering adopting the Community Preservation Act, which would create a pot of funding for affordable housing, historic purposes, and farmland preservation, and, and I think it's a really good moment, particularly with what's happening with COVID and food supply chains and stuff, to really get the town thinking about food supply and farmers in the same breath, like in the same conversation. So I just wanted to share that, because I, it's something I've been thinking a lot about for lots of communities around New England as part of my work, and I think it's, it's a really great opportunity to kind of seize the moment.
Definitely, I couldn't agree with you more.
Yeah, well, you know, I'm sure that, I'm sure that, that whoever this, when this group is assembled, you know, will, they will be looking for lots of, um, sort of, I think, I think advice and, um, from, from outside folks, and so that be, you might want to be thinking about, you know, some sort of a, of, of, of a, of a presentation you could make that might advocate for something like that.
Yeah, there's definitely a lot of, and Eric, I'm sure knows far more than I do about this, but a lot of, you know, a lot of communities who've, who've taken certain measures to, to protect farmland overlays, or certain districts, or various zoning measures via zoning to, to create protection, but I think there's some, some other, other creative approaches, um, as well, so I'm, I'm excited that all these conversations are coming together at once.
Very good. So I guess, so we'll learn more about that, I guess, um, Fox News, the mayor's putting that together, and, um, uh, we, we should know, like, did you give any sense what the timeframe was on that, Eric?
It sounded like she wanted to get going on that pretty soon, so I would imagine in several weeks from now, I mean, within weeks, not months or years.
Yeah, all right, good, excellent.
I will just offer that I will, uh, volunteer Charles to, uh, represent the board.
You're, you're good, you're, you're good at volunteering me for this stuff, I'm, I'm.
Poor Charles is on like fifteen things, so are you, George.
I would, I would, I would love to be involved in it, um, and if the board has faith in me, I would, uh.
A lot of faith, we have a lot of faith in.
Oh, thank you, I gladly take that on.
You're, you're too kind and generous with your time, yes, I second George's recommendation for you to be on that, Charles.
All right, well, thank you, I, I don't know, we probably don't need a formal vote on that, well, it'll, it'll, but, uh, it'll, it'll sort of come up, I guess, at some point. Uh, I did have a library meeting, um, this afternoon, just before this, and the library's going along well, we're looking at various, um, HVAC system, just, you know, discussing lead versus net zero energy building design, um, and how all that ties into, uh, building envelope design, levels of insulation, budget, cost trade-offs, so it's in, we're, we're sort of in this, we're in a process now of design, what they call design development, there's gonna be another sort of three to four weeks of this process going on, and, uh, the project will be at a point where it can be cost estimated, so it sounds like that's gonna start happening, you know, I'm guessing early July or so, so we'll have a, a price tag for the building, and then, then we'll have to start making some, you know, value-based decisions on.
Cool.
Pride is gonna be, it's always a balancing act, you know, with energy, the energy sustainability issues in terms of what you, what you can afford, and what, what the, you know, what the cost benefit is.
Charles, is there a, a, a goal of, like, when construction would start for the library?
Um, that's a good question, you know, I think, just, I, if, 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 if everything was linear, and there was no fire station, um, sort of thing happening, I, yeah, or the pandemic, my guess is, is they, they would be ready to break ground next spring. It's probably like a, it's probably like a sixteen-month construction project, so if they start in spring twenty, twenty-one, maybe they're done late summer twenty, twenty-two. But, they, they're gonna have to find a place for the fire station to go, between, between now and next spring, for that to happen.
You know, on, um, on the, um, you know, talking about, um, uh, cost benefit, um, calculations, considerations, on the, um, Mass Plan Implementation Committee, uh, the question came up with the library about, um, internal pollution questions and toxins and off-gassing of materials, and Carol Collins was talking about, uh, how much more expensive it is to get, um, you know, construction materials that will be less, um, toxic in that regard. Um, so it's, it's, as you were saying, such a trade-off, when you're dealing with things like that.
I mean, you know, you, you could get low VOC paints for wood finishes, the, if, the more you stay with natural materials, the better, the less plastic you use, carpets are a notorious offender for, for, for noxious off-gassing, and you can get, um, green and recycled, um, low off-gassing, low VOC carpet products as well, and so that's gonna be definitely something that, that, that's gonna have to be, you know, a focus, but again, it's all, it's all trade-offs. The building design is looking really cool, I don't know if anybody's seen it or not, but, uh, it looked, it looks great.
What again?
The building design.
What again? Oh.
Bi- building design for the library?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I could, I could show it to you if you're interested in seeing, is anybody interested in seeing it?
Actually, I am if it's a quick thing, I'm favoring, so.
We've been meeting for over two and a half hours now, since six o'clock.
I know, I know, I know, let me just, uh, let me see if this is the right, the right thing to show you.
That's our new starting time.
It's only been an hour and a half, it just feels like two and a half.
Let's see here. All right, people seeing that?
Ooh.
Yes.
So, Federal Street's over here, Federal Street's, sorry, Jim, Federal Street's over here, the, the, the existing libraries in here, there's a road that comes down along in here, the fire station's back in here. Sorry, I didn't mean to make that bigger, I'll, I'll just, I'll just go, I'll blow through these things quickly, is that sort of an aerial view?
Ooh.
Post office.
Look at that rendering. Whoa, that looks legit.
Doesn't it? Like, whoa, somebody, somebody actually designed this. Doesn't it? Like, whoa, somebody, somebody actually designed this. That's a view from the, from the north.
College campus.
I know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be beautiful. Anyway, these are.
So is that solar, is planned now?
Y- y- yeah, so there's, there, the sawtooth skylights will have solar on them and then the, the flat roof will have, you know, solar, uh, solar racks. These are some cool cutaway views of the inside. These are really nice renderings.
They're gorgeous renderings.
I think this is the, this is the children's section, which looks north, has this garden area in here and sort of low stacks.
Wow.
Missed again another view of the children's area.
Very cool.
This is looking from the main lobby into the children's area. I think that's, that's, that's looking and that's in the main lobby looking towards the entrance off Main Street.
Great, that seems like chairs.
The, the, the architect, the architects that don't focus too much on the furniture, these are all placeholder. Anyway, I just have wisdom to the stuff to give you a sense of the character of the space.
Yeah, thank you.
And just quick, Charles, is, um, is there any thought to the outdoor aspect of the new library, like courtyard or garden space?
Yeah, there's a landscape committee, it's, it's gonna be, I think, collaborating with, with both local artists and with the landscape designer for the project to try and do something in that front courtyard area, which will be inviting and soft and welcoming, attractive.
It's like the first thing I've seen in a while that makes me feel excited to be around people again.
I know, right? We'll all be wearing, we'll all be wearing masks.
I know, the people in the universe didn't have masks on.
That's right. Free COVID scale figures.
Right, everyone's gotta be much farther apart.
Yeah.
That's funny. Well, great, thanks for being on that committee. That's some great work. It's really exciting.
A lot of people have done a lot of work on that. I'm, I'm just kind of coming in, you know, after ninth hour, but, um, it's fun to be a part of. All right. Um, any further discussion about anything? Anybody have any more, um, staff reports for the board? Nope. We have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, one last question, actually. Um, just, no, no, I did, um, just as far as, um, our vacancies on the board. And I wondered if there's any thought of progress about that.
I, I gotta reach back out to the mayor. So she appointed some, she appointed a guy named Mark Maloney. Well, actually, I think I might've gone to high school with here in Greenfield. And, uh, he, he, he looked like a really interesting guy, um, and he had a good.
Now there's two Mark Malonys.
Oh, really? Maybe it's a, maybe it's a different Mark Maloney.
No, this was the one that was on a city council for a while, the one with the I and not Y. Yeah.
Different Mark Maloney, never mind. He still had a good resume and, and, and good background for this. And, and he, uh, he wrote a nice letter of interest to the mayor. So I'm gonna reach out to, I'll reach out to her and find out what, what the status is on him joining us, but he's, he's gonna be a good addition.
Great. This, the Mark Maloney, yeah, you know what I'm talking about, Eric. The Mark Maloney with red hair was on the, uh, ZBA.
Yes. Well, that's, that's not Mark, yeah, okay.
And the Mark Maloney with dark hair, uh, worked for the, uh, FERC. Yes, and he was on the city council. And was on the city council and was the city governor representative to the master plan committee.
Yes.
Cool.
Yep. So that's who, that's who has been appointed?
I believe so, yes.
He would be excellent. Great. Very excellent.
That's great to hear. I did put, I did, you know, put the word out to, to, you know, folks who through like the Congress School and then other grads and it's kind of a wild time for folks, but, um, it'd be great, great to get, great to get a few more people with.
He, he, he does want to just, uh, be appointed as an alternate, not as a full member.
What is, what is this?
Stop with that.
Just wanna put it on your resume and just hang out?
He had some reason why, uh.
Oh, jeez.
Yeah, come on. Yeah, I'm with George.
Yeah.
All right, well, that's better than nothing. Keep putting the word out.
We still, we still do need a, another full member, uh, so some.
Okay.
Yeah, I reached out to Jeff Sauer and is that how he spouts his last name? Sauer?
I, uh, Sauer.
Sauer, Jeff Sauer. Yeah, he never emailed me back. I don't know if my email got caught in the spam mail or not. I mean, it wrote a really nice, long email. Cause he lives in town.
I had reached out to him after the, um, the event, uh, the master plan committee put on. And he had some interest, but worried he wouldn't have the time, so I can try again.
Yeah, go ahead. I mean, I, I, I'm wondering if my email didn't get through to him, because I would have thought that I'd get a response.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Yeah, so if you want to reach back out to, if you have a connection with him.
Good.
All right.
Very good.
Good meeting.
Good meeting, guys.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Thanks, team. So July second, not the eighth, I mean, um, not the eighteenth of June.
The second.
All right, see you guys in a month.
All right.
All right, move to adjourn.
Oh, uh, second.
All in favor? No discussion?
Hi.
All right.
All right, thanks, guys.
Goodbye, everybody. Thank you, thank you, Eric.
Thanks, Eric, as always. Have a good night. Bye.
Bye-bye.